Good evening, welcome to the February 12, 2014 city council meeting. Could I have the rule call, please?
Salem Derby.
President.
Dan Hagan.
Present.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Here.
Thank you, could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I obtain a motion for approval of the minutes of January 15.
Second.
A motion and a second for approval of the minutes of January 15. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstaining, abstentions? Okay. Motion passes. Public speak time, is there anyone here from the public who would like to address the council on anything other than what's on the public hearing agenda? Please come to the podium, state your name, address. Okay, not seeing any, we can move on. Now, we have a special appearance tonight by our school superintendent Nancy Folonby, please come to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for letting me come and present this request. We would like to be able to submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for an app for that we actually what we have to do is submit the statement of interest before we can even submit any kind of application to them. This is the first step in the process. And in order to be able to submit this statement of interest, we would need city council approval and also school committee approval. The school committee has already approved my submission of a statement of interest, so we're hoping that you also will agree to do that. We've decided at the school committee level to submit a statement of interest for each one of our schools, for all three elementary schools and for Whitebrook Middle School. For Whitebrook Middle School, it would be a repair project, so it would be a renovation of the school, taking care of windows and ceiling and walls and boilers and heating systems. As you may know, Whitebrook Middle School was air-conditioned at one point in time, it no longer is, it's an open space classroom model, and so the ventilation and the heating and the cooling are not efficient any longer. Our utility bills are high due to that, and so we are thinking that a renovation would certainly help us make the building more accessible for instructional programs, more comfortable for our students and our teachers, and certainly lower the utility bills, which would be good for all of us. For the elementary schools, we've put in, we are requesting to put in a project that would be either a replacement or a renovation of the elementary schools. What happens if they decide to take a look at our schools is they will come out, as you may remember from when the high school project was put into the school building authority. They come out and they look at your schools, and then they determine what it is that they're going to offer to do for us. Now, the statement of interest, as I say, must be submitted in order to participate. It in no way commits the city to any kind of funding, nor does it commit the school building authority to any kind of funding. It's simply, just as the title indicates, a statement of interest. We are interested in having them maybe think about us for an application. The deadline for the repair project for Whitebrook is Friday, so there is some urgency to that. We, of course, had planned to submit this to you last week, and the snowstorm prevented that from happening. Unfortunately, we have this meeting tonight before the snowstorm tomorrow, so that one's an urgent matter to us, because we do have to have that submitted for them to even consider us for an application. And the elementary projects, because they are renovations or replacement, aren't due until April, so we have a longer time to do that application or to do that submission, statement of interest, as it's a much more complicated and complex submission. Do you have any questions? I just also wanted to say that you have approved the statement of interest for Whitebrook Middle School three times before. It's essentially the same statement of interest that I've submitted the last three years as a superintendent, so it really isn't any different. Dan, did you have a question?
I was gonna tell you, ask you that, and you've already answered the question.
Oh, yes.
And for the other councilors, moving on this tonight is appropriate, we've discussed it, the president and I, because it has been hashed out three other times. It's the same resubmission, basically, of the same project, so we believe that it has been gone through the ropes of the city council. And again, it's not committing us to anything, anyway.
That's correct.
But just that we're interested, so.
That's correct.
We feel that we could vote on the Whitebrook one this evening, but we would send the others to committee.
I greatly appreciate that.
Any additional questions?
Just one for the superintendent. This is, in essence, like the past three times we've put this Whitebrook, it's just basically put on, correct me if I'm wrong, put on a waiting list from the state, and it's up to them or the building authority to either move it forward, or, I mean, we have to do this to even have them consider it, correct?
That's exactly right. And when I talked to the MSBA after the last submission of the Whitebrook project, and I hadn't heard anything back from them, which typically happens, you don't hear anything back from them until you get a letter sometime in the following school year saying that, you know, "Thank you for your application, but you aren't being considered," or "Thank you for your statement of interest, you aren't being considered for an application." And Brian McLaughlin told me that there were, I think it was 286 submissions of statements of interest, and out of those, they took, I think it was less than 80, and I think it was even smaller than that. So they take a very small percentage of the statements of interest and request an application from them, so.
Any additional questions for the superintendent? No? Okay, thank you very much, so we will then move on to the first motion for Whitebrook. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Hagan.
Sure. If there's no other questions by the councilors, I'll make the following motion. Having convened an open, in an open meeting on February 12, 2014, prior to the closing date, the city council of East Hampton, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest. From prior to February 14, 2014, the SOI deadline for the Whitebrook Middle School located at 20 Park Street, which describes and explains the following deficits and priority category or categories for which an application may be submitted to the school building authority in the future, in the future replacement, renovation, or modernization of the school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and the ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in the school facility. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or in any other funding commitment from the school, excuse me, from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commitments from the city, town, or regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And I'll make that, obviously, in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have motion, a second for the Whitebrook Middle School interest, statement of interest, thank you. Any additional discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes.
I'd also like to make the following motion, that the other three requests, Center Street School, Peppin Street School, and Maple Street School, be sent to the finance committee for further review.
Second. A motion, a second to submit the remaining statements of interest to finance. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, communications, budget officials, boards committee, counselor Hagan.
No, Rist.
Oh, Rist, I'm sorry.
We've had two communications, both are important. The planning board's recommendation on the medical marijuana ordinance is something that is being considered this evening under public hearings, and if you haven't seen it already, it's very thorough review of the entire ordinance, and it was passed 4 to 0 by the planning board. The second is a letter from the police department, REA, the Highland Avenue, Northampton Street stoplight issue, for our review. That particular item is under ordinance?
Public safety.
Public safety, it is?
Yeah, we'll move it to public safety.
We have to move it to public safety. Okay, and so I'll therefore move that to public safety for review.
Okay, formal motion, I assume.
Yeah, formal motion.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second to move the request concerning the Highland Avenue intersection to public safety. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
That concludes.
Thank you, counselor Hagan.
Just one quick statement, I always, we have such a unique city here, and I happen to see it, I don't know the gentleman, but I did read an article about a gentleman by the name of Jeremy Powers, who won the U.S. National Cycle Cross. I mean, he was the national champ in Colorado, and I know we have a big cycling contingent here in East Hampton, and I just wanted to kind of mention his name. I didn't know it existed, and I guess he did go to Europe, to the Netherlands, and competed, and I just wanted to bring up his name, and again, I don't know the gentleman, but I think it's kind of unique for our city, that we have a national champ, so.
Yeah, and I think we've, in the past, been, we've recognized yo-yo champions and anyone who has, you know, brought in recognition, and especially considering the bike trail and physical fitness, I think it would probably be a great idea to give him a citation like we've done in the past, so we should invite him into them. Yeah, I will do that. Next meeting might be too soon.
He's back from Europe.
Oh, he's okay.
He's still there.
Yeah, okay, well then, maybe we'll plan for the beginning of March meeting and see if we can.
Feel free.
Yeah, exactly. We'll go to him.
You wish.
Thank you for that information. Okay, moving on, I think we have time for standing committees.
Mayor Communications.
Oh, skip right over to the mayor, I'm sorry. Mayor Communications, Mayor Kedger.
A little different from communications, but while we're recognizing yoga championships, I thought everybody really liked to recognize the East Hampton Drama Club and the Parent Teachers Association for Little Shop of Horrors. Play was superb, and as Nancy informed me, they actually had two casts, so it ran for four days. Oh, there you are. One of the.
Invited actors.
Yes, one of the actors is here, and it was great. It was just unbelievable. And so just some of the great things that are going on in town, and actually, I'm sure all of you probably participated in the Winter Fest. So a huge thanks to the Nashua Pond Steering Committee, Liz Provo, and Burns Maxey, East Hampton City Arts. I mean, two days of a Winter Fest, and also Kathy Lynch for the opening ceremonies for the premiere. But, I mean, the horse drawn wagons, the ice harvesting, that was amazing, all the things, the wagons, horse drawn wagons, rock climbing, snow shoeing, which I understand there was a two-hour wait for, we're there to talk about that today, and the Chili Fest, which Joy and I were very happy to be serving chili. I got really lucky. I had volunteers, wherever you need me, put me, and I was one of the most fortunate persons there to be put at the chili competition. So, and I have to say, I did pick the winner. So just, I do know my chili. So just, you know, not the typical mayor communications, but just to share, you know, how extremely unique our community has become. And then it went, I mean, after the Winter Fest, it went right into the art walk, which, I mean, when you're talking about hundreds of people on the street in February, it's pretty incredible. So I'd just like to thank everybody that had a part in it, and that's it.
Thank you. Okay, now, I think we have a couple of communications, I mean, subcommittees. Rules and Government Relations, counselor Rist.
No report to save you, Mr. President.
Okay, Finance, counselor Hagan.
There's a couple of items of new business, but I can do that when we get to new business. Our next finance meeting, next week, obviously, because we missed last week, will be another full council meeting, so the next subcommittee meeting of finance will be on the 26th of February, and.
26th? Oh, good. Are you meeting prior?
Is it a Wednesday? Today's the 12th.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry.
We have to.
So then I'll be on the 26th, and I believe the only other item, if the councilors had it in their packet, we did go over the city council budget that we have to submit to the city. The finance committee, along with the, with President McCoy, sat, and we kept our budget to the same as last year. We did move a few items around, but I guess I would, I don't think it needs necessarily a vote in the council, but if you do have it, I would like maybe I put it in the form of a motion for the full council to approve our filing of this proposed city council FY-2015 budget to the finance director and the mayor.
Second.
Okay.
I was gonna say, no one's seen it, though, so I'm wondering.
I didn't know if, I think it was in the pack.
Oh, it was in the check?
Yeah, it was in the pack.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second for the approval of the 2015 city council budget. Any discussion about the budget? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
And that's it, till new business.
Okay, thank you. I think at this point, though, I'll make a motion to open public hearings.
Move the public hearings to be open?
Second.
Okay, motion, a second, open public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Counselor Hagan, interdepartmental transfer.
Okay. I'll do a second reading on this item that's up for public hearing tonight. It's an interdepartmental transfer dated December 19, 2013. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $1,081.49, and is to be transferred from the reserve fund in the amount of $1,081.49, and transferred to the fire department retro pay in the amount of $921.23, and the ambulance department retro pay in the amount of $160.26. The amount requested is used for the following purpose, to fund a step increase not funded in FY-2013. This item was approved 3 to 0 by the finance committee, and I know the fire chief is here, and he can explain why one firefighter was left off.
Chief Mott, if you just want to come to the podium, set your name and address for the record.
Good evening, David Mott, our fire chief. I can apologize for my casual appearance, it's Counselor Derby's fault, he scheduled basketball practice and didn't remind me we had a council meeting tonight. Sorry. The request before you is for a misstep increase for a firefighter. He was at the fire academy, attending recruit training in March, and it totally slipped my mind to put him in for a step increase, and he was so busy, he didn't remember until the first week in August. So we were already out of the previous fiscal year, so we had to come back and ask for this, and that's why that request is before you.
Okay, any additional questions for the chief or counselor Hagan? No? Okay, thank you very much. So anyone here from the public who would like to talk to the, speak to the council concerning that financial thing? Okay, counselor Hagan.
Okay, I'll make the following motion, if there's another question by counselor, I'd like the full city council to approve the following appropriation, the amount of $1,081.49 from the reserve fund, and that amount to be transferred to the fire department retro pay in the amount of $921.23, and the ambulance department retro fund in the amount of $160.26 to fund a step increase not paid in the FY-2013 budget.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second for the approved interdepartmental transfer of $1,081.49 to fund a step increase not paid in FY-2013. Any additional discussions on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
That's my own.
I guess that concludes for you. Thank you. Counselor Derby, I believe this is your next public hearing.
This is mine. Thank you, Mr. President. So what we have here is, in Massachusetts, the citizens overwhelmingly approve medical marijuana in the state of Massachusetts. The DPH then came up with a model ordinance for cities and towns to use to help guide them in the granting of licenses and permits for these facilities to distribute the drug to the patients. And the planning board and the ordinance subcommittee spent time reviewing the ordinance that was reworked by the city planner, was reworked by the planning board to match it more for East Hampton's needs. And then, as councilor Rist stated before, the planning board approved this 4 to 0. The ordinance subcommittee approved this 3 to 0, with some of the changes. And I can highlight briefly what the ordinance kind of creates. There's two main types of facilities that it allows for. One would be a registered marijuana dispensary, which would be a place where you can, it would be distributed. And then the next type of place is an off-site medical dispensary where the, it is removed from the cultivation and processing, so it would just be a store for the dispensing. And a registered dispensary would have the cultivation and the processing on, onsite. Now, and it does not have to, the RMD does not have to actually sell the product. They can just grow it and process it, and then transport it to an off-site facility for transport. Some of the things that we wanted to make sure was that if one of these did come to East Hampton, that it would, it would be allowed to exist in a place where potentially the original ordinance would have prohibited it. I'll give an example, if we wanted to reuse some of the old mills for a purpose for this, there was a pretty stringent distance requirement for places where children congregate. But that's, since that language is very ambiguous, we felt like it would be better for the license granting authority to not have that ambiguity. So, and for example, if it was in the old mills, a place where people could congregate would be the bike path. And so, you know, someone could say, well, people congregate on the bike path, so therefore this should not be able to be, exist. And we felt that that might be a little prohibitive. So that was one of the main changes that we made. Everything else was, you know, basically going off of the original ordinance. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Rist?
Two questions. First, I understand that if we didn't pass this ordinance, it would not necessarily mean that someone couldn't cite a dispensary here, because it would be under the state law that they would be following. Therefore, we would lose some local control.
Some local control.
So, just so in case someone asks, we're passing this ordinance so we can maintain control. Not passing it doesn't mean we stop a dispensary from being cited in East Hampton.
Right.
That is correct?
That is correct, and the state also has very stringent guidelines as well, and so they would have to not only meet our local requirements, but the state's requirements as well. And it's very stringent as far as security and location and things of that nature. And I just want to clarify, so an off-site medical dispensary would be allowed in highway business, industrial, and mixed industrial. So within highway business, it would be a special permit, and I believe in industrial, it would be site plan approval, and then.
No, that's, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry.
And then, and mixed industrial would be a special permit as well. And then, for the RMD, so the one where it can be grown and not necessarily dispensed, that would just be within the industrial and within the mixed industrial. Those are the only two places in the city where it would be allowed.
Well, my second question has to do with the regulations, which is on the back page. Why site plan approval for industrial? Why not a special permit planning for all of the zones? Because I believe, obviously, it's easier, a site plan approval does not require the planning boards approve it. It does?
It does, it does, yep.
These are all planning.
These are all planning board, these would all be subject to planning board approval.
But special permit has a lot more.
It's a different level of process.
Oversight.
And so, and the planning board felt really comfortable with that, which is why they gave it a 4 to 0 recommendation. And I think, you know, I think what it does is that, right now, there's, there's other issues around citing one of these things, as far as like getting money from the bank. The banks aren't really all that eager to lend, so I think it allows for a little bit of a, someone to take a little bit more of a risk.
Got it. Thank you, that's very helpful.
Any additional questions for counselor?
I just have one, and I talked to Salem earlier when this first came up. Because this is used for people with debilitating ailments, you know, was my concern that we're putting it kind of out, out where people can't really get to it by bus, by walking, but did you say there's some type of a delivery system within the ordinance that would possibly cover that? I just wanted to bring that forward.
We did, and we, and so I did bring your comment forward, and, you know, I think this is something that Northampton kind of was along the lines, they wanted to be able to cite one in a place where people could walk to. You know, it is, the requirements for the off-site is very stringent as far as the windows have to be blacked out, you know, there has to be like a buzzing system to get in and whatnot. So that's one of the things, it wouldn't really necessarily mesh with a downtown business type of environment, or it could, but one of the things that they're really trying to push is a delivery. And so they're hoping that people will, rather than necessarily go to the dispensary, they will have a service that will deliver people that need the medicine to them. So that was, and when they, when that was something that was kind of proposed and promoted, I kind of backed off of trying to put it into downtown business and more into highway business areas, which I wouldn't, you know, that was just kind of the things that we had discussed. I don't know if that answers your questions.
Yes, Jim.
Okay. So does that, does delivery exist now, or is that something?
None of it exists yet, because we haven't passed the, we don't have any, I think the dispensaries have just received approval from the state. East Hampton does not have an off-site dispensary, as far as I know, approved for East Hampton. So I believe that it's, Northampton got one.
And Holyoke.
And Holyoke. But I believe that the other type, the RMD, I'm not sure if they've released the complete list of the approved growers and processors, so.
So the state, right now, does there, is there a delivery?
There's not delivery yet. As of yet, there's, none of them have kind of opened shop, so to speak. I mean, we're just talking, I think it was two weeks ago that they just released the approved, and that's just the first process in the whole, there's multiple steps.
Right. Okay. Any additional questions for counselor Derby? Okay, if there's anyone here from the public who'd like to come to the podium and discuss this issue, feel free to come up. Okay, not seen.
One last one.
Counselor Rist?
Just because you mentioned it at the beginning, you cannot get medical marijuana without a prescription.
Correct.
You must have a doctor's prescription.
Correct.
Like any other controlled substance.
Yep.
Just want to say that in case people think it's over cotton.
Not Colorado yet.
We're not Colorado yet.
Okay. JP, did you have a question?
I had a few questions.
Okay.
I know that the state had set some standards of 500 feet, I think was the standard, that if we don't pass an ordinance, then 500 feet is what the DPH regulation requires, and that seems a little much for our needs. I would, I would agree, I just, I think the proposal here is for 200, and I think that was designed around the, you know, as you said, the mill industrial district.
Yeah.
Which on one hand makes, you know, makes a lot of sense, you want to make use of the mills, but that mill industrial district is a mixed residential industrial use and not just a straight industrial use or a highway business use without residences. And I just wondered how, what the thinking was about how either the dispensary operation or the growing operation would fit in a residential section.
Well, I think it would be, well, first of all, as far as the distance went, you know, our thinking was, if there is, let's say, a back, you know, section of one of the mills that could be used for this particular purpose, well, if you went through the wall 500 feet, you'd be at a dance studio. You'd be at people's houses. So what we decided to do is we decided to reduce that to say, we would like to encourage the reuse of our mills in a variety of different ways. So not prohibiting this specifically from our mills. And now, as far as how it would fit in with residential areas, there's very strict standards and conditions. If you look at section 10.93, for example, it is, you know, there's very specific things about this that would relate to people's impact, for example, the hours, and making sure that, you know, people aren't going to be near it and using the product near the facility. Now, let me be clear, any, I think that any interest in East Hampton at this point is for, would be a processing facility, not necessarily, would not be an off-site dispensary where you could actually buy the product. East Hampton has not been approved for that, so that's, you know, it would be a place where it was grown, basically. Part of the regulations would be, there would be strict air quality controls, so you would not be able to smell anything if you were standing outside of the facility. All, there would be high-tech security, you wouldn't be able to gain access, you wouldn't be able to see in, you wouldn't, it wouldn't affect the neighbors in any discernible way other than workers walking into a door at their time of work. So, I don't know if that answers your question.
I think it does. I was aware that there were some, some pretty strong standards in the DPH regulations, and I think it's important to note that, that there is some protections, especially if we're going to approve a mill industrial district, that. we're going to approve a mill industrial district that includes residences in the same building as the building that will house either the dispensary or the grow operation. Question, if, I noticed that the MMA had some standards for violations. If a violation occurred, something that wasn't in conformance with our zoning ordinances, what would be the penalties? I think the MMA had recommendations of a small fines in increasing amounts to notice someone if they didn't control the odors for some reason, didn't, if something became objectionable. I don't see any violation standards.
We did not include that. That would be, those violations and those inspections are going to be conducted by the state. So the, all of these facilities are going to be, you know, inspected and regulated. So as far as on the local level, we don't have the ability to inspect and regulate these facilities necessarily, other than our building inspector when they're, you know, doing, we don't have a medical marijuana inspector. So, that being said, having a fine structure and a penalty didn't really make sense at this point, because that's going to be, that's going to fall into the state's arena. And, you know, honestly, if they're violating provisions of this, then they're going to be in jeopardy for losing their license. And they're going to be in jeopardy for not meeting the requirements of the zoning and not being able to operate their business.
Yeah, that shuts them down.
Yeah.
That certainly makes sense. In terms of the business or the operations that wouldn't be allowed, I noticed that there's the elementary, the middle, preparatory, vocational, high school, nothing about a daycare facility that had been dropped out.
Yeah.
And it had been in other recommendations from other organizations. I think the MMA had that, I'm not sure if PVP, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission did.
Yeah, daycare facilities, and that was one of the pieces, and also the piece about where children commonly congregate.
Yeah.
So those are the two pieces that we left out, and, you know, if someone's running a daycare facility, say, from their residence, which you can do, and that residence happens to be within that, I don't know, I think that as a committee and as, through our deliberations of the Planning Board, we felt that that piece wasn't going to be a prohibitive factor. It wasn't going to have a discernible impact on those facilities necessarily. That was just our thought.
There were, there were no fees associated with the, with, to the city, to the community for setting up?
Well, they will, they will, I mean, they won't be paying taxes.
Right, I meant individual fees.
No.
I know other communities had fees.
Other than the special permit fee. No, we didn't, we didn't ask for, there's already quite a few fees associated with the process as it is. So, we felt that.
Thank you, I think you've answered my questions.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions for Counselor Derby? No? I think I already asked about the public, right? Okay, so Counselor Derby, I guess we'll entertain a motion then.
Okay, so I would like to move to amend the zoning ordinance to allow medical marijuana dispensaries from the Planning Board's version dated January 15th, 2014.
Second. A motion of second to approve the medical marijuana ordinance. So any additional discussion amongst counselors? Okay, being seen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
Move that the public hearings be closed.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second for the closing of public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Back to standing committees, I believe we're at Public Safety. Counselor Hayes.
So, we have the Kingsbury Way, Bayberry Drive, Berchwood Drive, street exemptions, and I think this now, we did get a letter from our attorney that says that that seems okay, and we just need to talk to the city engineer and the, send an email to the Planning Department, I think, and we can take care of that at Project Safety.
Yeah, I think the Kingsbury Way, Bayberry Drive, Berchwood Drive, there are still issues with, I think Willow Circle and Autumn Drive, we can move forward, and so, as we spoke earlier, you could just try to assess, accumulate verbal or written approvals of it, and then we can move it and accept those streets. But yeah, you're right that, so we'll just wait for, to hear from you from those. And, and obviously, you now have the new, we just moved to you as far as the Kings, Highland Avenue, there we go. Boy, told it tonight. Okay, so, does that conclude?
That concludes.
Do you have, I know, no set appointments, meetings yet, then?
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you. Appointments, Counsel Rinn.
Yes, thank you. We met tonight at 5:35 to review the two mayoral appointments of Pete Solis and Andrew Hunter. Both are presently already on the board, so these are reappointments. Our motion, and came out with a 2 to 0 in the positive, was to bring forth this City Council of the two appointments in a positive affirmation so that the City Council can vote on these two appointments. So I'll make it in the form of a motion that the City Council appoint Peter Solis to the Agricultural Commission with his term of expiration of December 31st, 2016, and Andrew Hunter, Park and Rec Commission, 12/31/2016.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second for the approval of Pete Solis to Agricultural Commission and Andrew Hunter at Parks Recreation. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
Thank you. Our next appointment Subcommittee meeting will be February 19th in Room A at 5:30 for the five mayoral appointments that are in new business, and if you'd like me to make that motion now, I'll send them down to Appointments.
Aye, sure.
Okay, so make the motion that the five mayoral appointments that are in our new packet be sent to Appointments Subcommittee for review.
Second. There are a motion of second to move the new five mayoral appointments to Appointments for review. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
Thank you, I think that's it for me tonight.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance, Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you can see now, after the public hearing, we have one item on our agenda. We did meet on February 5th to discuss Chapter 2, Acts of 2002. We were really hoping that former Counselor Cobb could be with us that night, however he was feeling sick, so he was not able to attend. So, we are going to have a meeting on March 5th, 2014, at 6:00 PM, here, somewhere, where Barbara tells me, to discuss those Acts of 2002.
Okay, thank you very much. I can close. Property, Counsel Ziegler.
Thank you. We opened up our first discussion of the year on the authorization to dispose of the Parson Street School. That was also on February 5th, and we had a lot of community input at that meeting, and we've decided to continue the conversation to Wednesday, March 5th, also at 6:30. So our next meeting will be the 5th at 6:30. Does that work for you, JP?
Should.
Okay, good. And we will continue the discussion of the Parson Street School at that time.
In this building, or just pending room assignment?
Right.
Okay.
And that concludes.
Thank you very much.
Do you want me to move this?
Yeah, so now moving on, we have no old business, so new business. The review of elected salaries and other stipends, Counsel Riss.
Yes, I did request this per Charter, per Charter Section 2.4 and Article 3. If you, it was in your packet, we are required every new term to review the salaries of all elected officials and boards, member boards and committees. So I'd like to move that that be sent to the Finance Committee for review.
Second.
We have a motion of second to move the review of elected salaries, elected officials and other stipends to Finance. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Poll location.
I was gonna say, we actually, there's an error with the setting of the next public meeting, where actually the 5th is the same night as the City Council, so we'd be looking to change both property and ordinance.
To the 12th.
To the 12th, at 6:00 and 6:30 respectively.
Strike that from the record. Obviously, the clerk, you're aware of those, no changes, right? Okay. The next thing on new business is the poll location request on Cherry Street. This is typically taken by Public Safety, so I'm going to make a motion to move the poll location request on Cherry Street to Public Safety.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to move to Public Safety, so location, all Cherry Street, poll location. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. The last two are Finance.
I know, property just set for March 12th, but I believe Counselor Kozinski sits on both Finance and Property, and we usually meet on that second Wednesday also, so I don't know if there's an alternative.
Tuesday?
Tuesday. Tuesdays are more good.
What time does Finance meet from?
6:30.
We meet at 6:00.
I don't know if we'd be done.
I would imagine Property's going to go long. That should be the 6:00.
Maybe if you could move it a little bit longer later, maybe you don't want to move it later. I don't know how long, go ahead, Dean, Counsel.
Might I recommend that since this is a March, we do have another meeting next week, that everybody discuss this and come up with a date in the next week?
Yeah.
Might be better.
Well, I'll say. Thank you, Counsel Riss. Great, thank you. Finance, Counselor Hagan.
Yeah, we have two new items, both are interdepartmental transfers, and I'll do a first reading on them. The first one is an interdepartmental transfer dated January 27th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $15,000 to be transferred from the Reserve Fund in that amount, $15,000, and transferred to personal professional services in the amount of $10,000, and negotiated professional services in the amount of $5,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to provide funds for an anticipated, funds for an anticipated shortfall in mediation and arbitration. I'll also make that in the form of motion that that item be sent to Finance for review.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second to move to Finance, the request for $15,000 interdepartmental transfer for anticipated shortfall mediation arbitration. Any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'll also do a first reading on another interdepartmental transfer dated January 27th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested, $4,800 to be transferred from the Reserve Fund in that amount, $4,800, and transferred to the Fire Vehicle Repair, $4,800. The amount requested to be used for the following purpose: to provide funds for repairs to both Engine 1 and Engine 2. And I will make that in the form of motion that this item be sent to Finance.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second to move the departmental transfer of $4,800 to Finance. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. See you next Wednesday.